All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the regular council meeting for October 8, 2025 to order so forth. Now, will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City manager, could you take the roll, please?
I'll go ahead and take care of that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Hilberg.
Here.
Councilmember Burris.
Present.
Mayor Proton McCully.
Here.
Mayor Loman.
Here. Thank you. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda order?
So moved.
Come on. Second.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And any changes in conflict of interest?
No change.
Nope. All right.
No change.
Awesome. All right. We'll move on to item two, the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one blanket motion by the council vote unless a council member or member of the public requests an item be pulled from consent for discussion. Items pulled will be addressed after council completes a consent calendar vote and will require a separate motion. Are there any items that council or the public would like to pull? I'm seeing seeing none and no comments. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Move on to item three, agency reports, CHP.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Officer Jason Lyman, Gold Run, CHP, Public Information Officer. I got a few stats to go over for last month here. We issued 379 citations, 157 warnings. We had 246 motorist services. We had eight arrests. Five were DUI-related arrests. We had a total of 20 collisions. Eleven were injury collisions and nine were property damage only collisions. Other stuff we got going, we got some, a lot of Caltrans stuff still going on. They're trying to catch up before supposed to get some weather starting next, early next week. They're trying to get some stuff wrapped up this weekend, but they're far from being complete. They are going to be trying to make some arrangements to clear out some of the areas and and open up a few spots hoping to give the, if we do get any, I don't believe we're going to get any snow down this to in the area of like the Baxter area, but it is predicted to be up like around Highway 20. From there on up, probably we'll be getting some. The Highway 20 Bridge is still being worked on and they're still months away from even being able to get that one side opened up. So they're, they are been working a lot of extra, some more nights and weekend stuff, trying to catch up on there, but they are actively trying to get things buttoned up before we get to the real winter. Does anybody have any other questions for me?
I have a simple one, I think. About five years ago on Thanksgiving weekend, I was passed by a motorcycle that had to be going 140 miles an hour and fairly closely behind it were about five highway patrol cars and above it was a helicopter. And just this past week between Applegate and Meadow Vista, I was passed by a motorcycle going about that speed. And I'm just wondering, what is the policy these days? What, what can you do in a situation like that? It's so crazy. Chasing them seems like doesn't help, but you guys know more about what you're supposed to do than I do.
Yeah, obviously, we're trying to to stop that from happening. Depending on what the, there's so many variables that could be involved in that as far as whether we will pursue or not, depending on what was the original stop and what all else has happened between then and when we're getting into it. We do try to rely on air operations a lot for those, especially the motorcycles, because we just can't keep up with those. And, you know, they cut in through traffic and stuff like that. So quite often, the either the helicopter or the airplane can fly, you know, well above and they've got some amazing cameras on those things that when can read license plate from miles away. And they can be so far up and it's happened several times that I've known just in our area where they followed people with the plane clear to, there was one that was, they got after it in Truckee's area, came all the way through here and they ended up going all the way to San Jose. And the airplane followed them all the way over there and they pulled into a gas station thinking they were just free and clear and they got the locals to go right in there and right as he's got off the bike to go in to pay for his gas, they all pulled in the parking lot and and got him. So it's, that happens where we use a lot of that type of thing on there, but it's a, there is a definitely a judgment call on that as far as risk versus gain on that. I mean, you can't just let everybody go because then everybody will just run away, but the Highway Patrol is one of the very few departments in the state that actually does have a pursuit policy.
All right.
Most of them do not.
Hey, that, that's reassuring. Thank you.
Well, he brought up the question motorcycle, so I'll follow suit. Driving in front of City Hall here, there was a guy on a motorcycle with a, like a two-year-old. Is that legal?
They got a helmet on?
No, there was no helmet.
Yeah, well, that would.
But it's legal with a helmet for a two-year-old. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's not very, not the smartest thing to do, but it technically is legal. Yes.
I think they have a lot of trucks sent. I thought that was a problem, like the one that, here is the one that went inside, just the two that stood. There was no curb or anything. The whole tractor trailer didn't go down inside. I have some places. How did that happen? And it's huge. Was that a drunk driver or just something?
I actually have no idea about that. That's not in our area. That would have been out of the Auburn office. I didn't hear about that particular one, but. Mm-hmm.
Tractor and the trailer were on top. Like, there's no curb on the road. Drunk driver, full of sleep. I just wondered, do you have more of these incidents with drunk drivers? Thanks, since there's a focus on trying to get them to know how to drive here in the United States?
Um, I don't, I don't know how much more we have. I don't have exact statistics on that, but I think a lot of it is the, you know, information that's out there that gets presented to so many more people than it used to. But there, we do have, there are some many really great truck drivers out there, but there are some that have no business being out there and they're, they're, whether they're licensed or not, they're out there driving and yeah, it's there, that's been brought up in several real big cases here lately with, you know, people that shouldn't have been licensed or anything and and so it's brought a lot of that to attention. And I think they are looking into that a little more and being a little more diligent on that type of stuff, but that's more of a DMV type thing than that's issuing them licenses and stuff than it is, I mean, we're enforcing stuff when we, when we stop them for whatever reason, but the Highway Patrol doesn't have anything to do with actually issuing licenses or anything, so. Yes.
Jason, what is the area that you have for all your stats?
Our, our area is on 80 here from Canyon Way to King Vale. And then Highway 20 out to the Nevada County line in the Bear Valley area there. And then, you know, rural streets around here as well. But most all of the stats are, are on the freeway between Canyon Way and King Vale. Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good day.
You do. Plaush County and Cal, Plaush County Sheriff and Cal Fire are tied up on an incident, so probably won't be here tonight. Do we have any nonprofits that want to report tonight? All right. Come on up.
Hello, Erin Newington from the Historical Facts Downtown Association. I wanted to report in on an excess, successful event that we had this weekend, Pints and Grooves. We had hundreds of people join us, far exceeding our expectations. Some of the feedback that we got while we were applying for the Levitt grant was that we really needed to focus on family-friendly events. And we feel like we accomplished that. If for those of you who attended, there was a lot of kids playing and running around and that was super exciting to see. We rebranded Oktoberfest to Pints and Grooves and a lot of that was to focus it less on drinking and more on music. And so we feel like that was a good switch. And we're super excited about the success of this brand new event. So we featured multiple live performances, including one kid from the local high school, which was super cool. If you were at Oktoberfest last year, he was walking around Main Street strumming his guitar. And so he had his 15 minutes of fame there in front of everyone and that was kind of cool. We had local beers on tap and a great lineup of food trucks. So I wanted to give you an update really quickly on the Levitt Amp Music Grant, which really did inspire the Pints and Grooves event. We have all the final materials submitted to the Levitt Foundation. We did receive a letter of support from Cindy Gofferson's office, which we're super grateful for. And so now we just wait. We find out on November 28th whether Colfax is awarded this grant. Out of the top 50 finalists, 30% will be chosen for the grant. So we have a really good shot at making that happen. I think, you know, anytime you're launching something new, there's always hiccups that you have to work through. And we have two professional music production companies that pledge to help us with these concerts. And of course, both of them were not available on the short notice for the Rock the Vote concert, so we just figured it out. And so we were really happy to have the second concert Pints and Grooves to be so successful. We worked out a lot of the hiccups, had more professional equipment. And so we're hoping the Levitt grant people are watching. We are also working on our fundraising efforts. Should we get the grant, it is a matching grant and the first milestone is 13,000. So we're in the process of raising those funds. But we've decided because this was such a successful event, it really did bring the community together, that we're going to go ahead and launch a multi-day music concert series anyways. So whether we have the big budget of the Levitt Foundation or we just raise the funds and make it happen ourselves, we've proven that we can do it. And it can be a successful event for Colfax. So as soon as I hear, you will hear and cross our fingers because we deserve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Any other nonprofits tonight? We have a public comment coming up right after, in just a minute. Sorry. We'll get, we'll get there and just, yep. Okay. No other nonprofits tonight? All right. We don't have any presentations tonight, no public hearings, so now we'll move on to public comment. Sorry. Um, yeah, sorry. Caroline Hickson? And one sec. So you speak on items that are not on the agenda tonight and we can't act on these items, but we can add them to a future agenda if you want. And please speak clearly into the mic and you have five minutes to make your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Caroline Hickson. I'm a resident of Colfax and I've been for 46 years here. And I just have a couple of questions because I've heard some disappointing information. And I've heard that the music studio across the tracks, Rainbow Music, has been given pretty short notice to vacate the railroad car. And I wanted to know why they were asked to vacate, especially on such short notice. Curious about what are the plans for the railroad car? And I'm aware there's a long-range plan with the Railroad Society to try to get railroad cars moved in here for a museum, but I know that's a long range, pretty far away. So I, so my, another question is, do you know that the people that are the tenants in there that have been, they have been there for 40 years? I think they are the longest owner occupied, continuous running business in this town. And that's saying something for Colfax. As you know, businesses come and go here. And so I'm wondering if you realize that the people that are the tenants started occupying that railroad car when it was quite rundown and they remade the windows, all the 40 windows in it, and they painted the inside, they painted the outside, they've taken care of it. And then sometimes different administration says, we'll take care of it. You don't have to take care of it. And then it goes back and forth. Right now they're kind of confused about who's taking care of the rose bushes. But right, I, another question, are you aware that they bring a lot of people into this town? Their business is a destination for parents whose kids are taking music lessons and for other adults that are taking music lessons. And those parents spend money here. They go to the coffee shop and the ice cream parlor and so forth. And there's a lot of people in this area who have been touched by their business for, you know, several generations. And so I just am concerned that they were given really short notice. And I'm one of the students there and I'm kind of upset about it. And I, I just feel that in a small town like this, what we rely on is interpersonal relationships and communicating with each other. And it just seems a little cold to give them 30 days' notice after they've been there for so long and done so much for our whole area. And I'd just like to know why it wasn't, why was there no public discussion or this was not brought to the public's attention? Anything like that? Sean, did you have, were you going to answer one of my questions?
Sorry, they've been on a year lease, so November, I believe, is when the lease is up. So that was, we were notifying them that we have probably other plans for it. We'd heard that they were, excuse me, possibly looking at retiring also. The city's willing to work with them to, I believe, to give them an extension or, you know, we're not looking to kick them out or force them to vacate. So we'll, I believe we're going to have that item on the next agenda, so we will have a good public discussion about it and everybody can come in and comment.
Okay.
We'll see what they need.
Is that it's pleasant, pleasant communication? That's how we work as a small town and.
Absolutely.
And it's pretty important. So they were pretty shocked, you know, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Public comment? Jackson?
Miles. Yes, I am that guy. How you doing, Larry? Yes. Okay. First thing, since Larry pointed out to me, is the plaque I got mentioned from my dad also should involve the Marstons. Thank you, Larry, for pointing that out to me. Okay, next thing. So I don't see any of them around here. Any of you guys remember what happened 30 years ago, come this July 1st? What did we lose and what happened to me? We lost Colfax PD. I was assaulted down in the railroad tracks. There was never a police report by the Plaush County Sheriff's. And I found out that we are paying a million dollars a year for the sheriff's department. I don't see either pay them or bring back our own police department. Then skateboard park, well, originally I'd asked for a BMX track skateboard park 20 years ago. So this, I want to build my skateboard park. I'm going to go next week to, to the community center and ask them for the top field, build my BMX track, which would bring a lot, a lot of people, I've already been told it was built, I could ring a national within a year here. And I mean, I'd like to put skateboard park right over there where the refrigeration for fridge change would, you know, we have a skateboard park by the railroad tracks, BMX with community garden. Because that wouldn't, I want to see that even bigger, too. So, and also, we need a Colfax phone again. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackson.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Jim Wood, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. I'm, I sit on the, the Colfax Heritage Railroad Park Group. And I just wanted to give you a update that I think you should all know firsthand. The Sacramento Railroad Museum has offered to donate all the rail we need to lay track out there for our future park plans. That rail will be arriving next week. So that's all taken care of. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is that while I was in the yard down at Sacramento yesterday morning, they gave me the opportunity to look through the shops, those big warehouse buildings of the Southern Pacific locomotive works that are part of the museum facility. And that's where all their, all their collection that is not on display is housed and it's quite a boneyard. But a lot of their staff were working on getting all the rail cars, their passenger rail cars ready for their Polar Express train ride that starts next week or sometimes, not next week, November sometime. But when I was looking at those cars, they had some of the car siding removed, repairing damage, long-term maintenance and, and, you know, historic rail cars are quite maintenance intensive. And it reminded me of our Railroad Society's role back in probably 2002, when we were involved in the depot restoration project. We, our group was involved in restoring the passenger depot, then the caboose. We were also asked by the city to perform a preliminary assessment on the rail car that was once a bank building here on the intersection. And then it was moved as part of that, that grand park plan. So we recruited, I think, two staff from the Sacramento Railroad Museum that have expertise in car maintenance, car body issues. And so we, we gave recommendations to the city council at that time. One of them was that there should be an assessment on the body of the car about every five years. That car is called a heavyweight car. It's, it's made out of steel with riveted panels. They are problematic. They're prone to degradation with water infiltration. Later cars were called stream lane cars. They were stainless steel and they're less problematic. So it's really important to perform periodic assessments of those cars. I'm, I'm pretty confident that has not been done in the last 20 years, more than 20 years. And it's crucial that that work is done if you want to preserve a really historic asset for the city that, that reflects its railroad heritage. So I would suggest that perhaps the Sacramento Railroad Museum would be willing to provide expert staff to come and assess that car at some point to see what work needs to be done to, to maintain it. So that's all I have to say about that. But it's, it's kind of timely with all the comments floating around about the ultimate disposition of that car. Regardless of what the city council does, the car needs to be really reassessed and not delay on it. Okay? Any questions?
Would you mind working with the city manager on getting them up here?
Sure. Yep. We have contacts.
Get a good, good assessment. That'd be great.
Yep. Okay.
Definitely time. So thank you.
I have a short question also, Jim.
Yep.
Is your group ready to move forward and request grants regarding moving the caboose at this time or are you near it?
I, I think so. I think that that's one of the next steps. And, but there, there can be preliminary incremental steps to work on the project to make it apparent that something is happening, something's working out there. And one is that with the arrival of the rail, we can start working, doing groundwork to make it look like it's a railroad attraction. Okay. And those are discussions that are being conducted in the group. Yep.
Deborah Frankel, I'm a Colfax resident. This is something that I'm sure is not on the agenda for a future meeting yet because it's a very new thing that's been floated. And it's also related to the railroad and the railroad history as an attraction. I read in the most recent Colfax Connection, there was, I believe it's where I saw it, an article about an artist who wants to do a great big railroad clock with a railroad theme. And I, I like clocks and I like clocks with moving parts and I like, I think it's called the choo-choo clock. It has the idea is it has a a train or at least a rail car that would come out like a, and go back in as, like a mechanical clock. I think it's a general, it's an excellent idea that should be followed up on. However, I think the location that, that he suggested as a possible place for it might not be the best location. The article I read suggested that it go up behind the stage in the art park, the, where the grass is. And which is about half a block from where I live, where the Marston Shoe Sign is. And I looked at that and tried to imagine that very large tall clock in that position. And it appeared to me that were that to be done, that it would shade the grass for large parts of the day. So I think the basic idea on a location is you want it to be somewhere where it can be seen, where it's near downtown so that people can find it and that it's in a position where it can be easily maintained because it's going to have moving parts. So I think that possibly might consider maybe having it on, on the rooftop of one of the downtown buildings if they have a foundation that would accom, that would accommodate something like that or set it up, or if that is not practical, maybe have a big open framework that it could stand on so it was high, but that, there would be ways to get, get around under it and that it wouldn't shade a large part of downtown. So that's just something to think about. I don't expect anything is going to be done right away. But I think it's a splendid idea and it would definitely be an, an asset to the town. I'm in favor of it, but maybe not in the, in that, in that part. Thank you.
I can add a little bit to that. When Jim Bowers came here last meeting to describe that, it was raised up on poles and it was above the stage, high enough so that it would shade the stage, but stand way up tall. And it wasn't going to be out there by the, the Marston sign, the way he proposed it. But we haven't taken that under consideration yet. That, that's something that's ahead, I think. We haven't agendized it yet, but it's something that we need to be talking about soon.
All right. Any additional public comment? Which fund? Yeah.
No, no.
Wait.
That's our.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we have an item on the agenda.
Hey there.
Evening.
My name's Josh Singer. I'm a local resident and I'm here to piggyback on the Rainbow Music School theme. And I came down and it was all well spoken and counted for, but I figured I'm here, so I might as well say something. My kids are devastated by that news. So I just want you guys to know there's an impact to these decisions. They came. news. So I just want you guys to know there's an impact to these decisions. They came home, their hearts broken by that. We haven't heard anything about retirement, which came up. That's not, they've never mentioned anything like that to us. So I think that's a, yeah, I can't imagine them doing that, but it's possible. But I just want, you know, we're hearing about, you know, bringing music into town is sort of a dichotomy there. Okay, we're going to bring all this music into town while we're pushing learning music out of town. It doesn't make any sense. This is, it's a learning, working place where, yeah, history is great, but history is happening right now there. Magic is happening right now in those walls. We don't have to go back 50 years to find the magic. It's happening right now and has been for many, many years, as we said. So I just want to let that be known. And they both have, my kids have school events tonight or they would be here themselves to speak. But yeah, I'm here on their behalf. So I just hope everyone considers these decisions. They're impacting the community significantly. I'm there every week. I've had lessons there myself. There's people of all ages. So it's my kids, but there's people of all ages in there, retired people getting out and having something to do that's productive. And we have two of the best music teachers anywhere. We, we can't replace a harp teacher. We'll probably have to drive to the Bay Area to find a harp teacher. I mean, it's, it's, this is such a huge asset and resource to this town to just, to just push them out like that. And I would hope that if we are reusing that space, that the city could work with them to find some other space so that they can continue and really be patient with them and help them land on their feet with that so that we can all access the, the great services.
Thank you. And we'll be sure and have that item on the agenda for our next meeting on October 22. So if your kids want to make it and talk about it, be good time. Any other public comment? Go ahead, Eric. Five minutes.
Good evening, Harry Anderson, local Colfax area resident. Thank you for the comment about Socrates. I've learned a lot about that, that man. Interesting. Very interesting. It said that we judge ourselves by our intentions and we judge others by their actions. So with that, I'm wondering, what are we doing or have done or plan to do about the signage to get people downtown? I promise I won't go 51 50 this time. But I'm curious as to that strip of land that we all take advantage of for the banner at Mountain Village. Nobody wants to seem to claim that piece of dirt for whatever reason. And since the last time for the third of July, when I actually landscaped those bushes that grow insane that make putting the banners up a little difficult. Why is that such a bone of contention? It's something that you see right when you come into town and it looks like hell, quite frankly. And I can't imagine why we just can't either, we either got to accept responsibility for it or give the responsibility to who it belongs to.
It's still in the Caltrans right of way. So nobody, no matter who owns it, we can't put permanent signage there. And we just haven't been called on putting temporary signage there so far. So.
And who owns that property?
I think, I don't know. I'd have to, I'd have to look at an exact parcel map and get it surveyed. I'm not, I'm pretty sure it's Mountain Village property there, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, I contacted the property management company that takes care of Mountain Village and that lady was going to get back to me and let me know something. And that hasn't happened. And I get the whole Caltrans thing. I get that part. But when you pull up to the intersection and you look at that light pole, right on that light pole, and because I understand they pay a huge amount to be on that light pole, just like they do on the freeway, food services with the arrow pointing completely away from downtown.
We can come up with some smaller sign ideas that might meet Caltrans requirements and see if they want to approve them through their process if we want to put something out there. So there is a, there is a route to do it. We do have the ability to attempt to put signs in those areas, but it has to go through the full Caltrans approval process if we're going to do it. So we gotta have, we gotta have it fit all their parameters for size, color.
You know, it's interesting in government how we can play all these games. I, I'm an aficionado of World War II. My favorite general was Patton, got in a lot of trouble, but won a lot of, won a lot of ground because he went against the system. And in my opinion, having run franchises and independent businesses and all this kind of things, it is truly easier to ask forgiveness than permission. And the fact that we're, this area is headquartered out of Marysville, the chances of them, if, if they can't even take care of 174, right where Nick's sliding sideways businesses and fix the two bumps in the road that have been there for three years now, the chances of them, of them finding a sign, slim to none. And, you know.
Yeah. Some, you know, I would think that they'd find the sign a lot faster. Some, somebody would be driving through to go to the yard or something or their, their other big building here. And, you know, you don't want to burn those bridges either.
But somebody's got to be first. And when you're dealing with the government, we all know this is not a newsflash. They're not in fear of getting fired. They're not in fear of anything. So, you know, again, like I said last time, this is our town, not theirs. They have the privilege of parking here and have their little offices and whatever, but the bottom line is it's our town. And that is affecting downtown. And when a guy from television tells you, I can't understand why it's so hard to find this place downtown. It's a beautiful little old town. Well, this guy does that for a living. So I'm pretty, I'm thinking it isn't just me. I've lived here 37 years. I mean, I, I don't understand. So something has to happen.
I mean, just we have some drafts or ideas, you know, we can pitch it to them.
Anyway, any step forward is better than nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment? Oh, got to race for it. Tim?
Thank you, Tim Ryan. A while back at one of our other council meetings, I had asked if you could ask to get in touch with Caltrans and have their agency report. And I haven't really heard anything about that. But now like what Jason's saying, with the snow coming and all that, it would probably be a good time to be able to have somebody here. And then with this man just said, possibly having an agent from Caltrans can clarify what we don't know and what we do know about signage and right of ways. So just a thought.
Thanks. Thanks, Tim. Tom?
Greetings. Always a pleasure to be able to talk to you guys. I've got a couple of things. First of all, I saw the CHP pull over a truck that didn't stop at the brake check area up the hill. So that was really good to see. Let's see. Okay. About getting people downtown. I've said this before. I don't know if I've said it formally in a meeting, but something like an arch across the road, you know, around the Catholic church. I see so many cars doing a U-turn there at the Catholic church because they don't, they, where am I going? They turn around and go back to McDonald's. If we really want to get people, you know, we need something like that, an eye catcher, you know, Colfax, littlest little city in the world or something, you know, cute like that. So I've been pushing that idea, but I don't think I've ever actually addressed the council. And what else? I think that's all. I'll be back for another agenda item.
Thank you. All right.
We missed you, Tom.
Any other public comment? No. All right. And we'll move on to item seven, council staff reports. Cam, you want to kick us off?
Okay. Let's see. I attended the quarterly meeting with the county and city officials. This was down in Loomis. The star speakers were our sheriff, Wayne Wu, and Willie Duncan, the president of Sarah College. And I think the city manager will have more details on this, but I think they're allocating millions of dollars, maybe 50 million for 50 acres or 40 acres. And they're going to have a, a, a training facility, but I'll let the city manager talk more about that. But it was, they got the full support of all the, the city councils there. And just as they finished up their talk at twilight, a meteor streaked across the sky, blessing their, their project. It was wonderful. Actually, it was a Starlink that, that burned up. And that's what it was. Okay. And then. What did I do? Oh, I attended the event that Aaron referred to, and it, it was nice to see all the kids out there and all the, the people. And it, I heard that she ran out of beer, which means it was popular. Three times out. So I agree. I, we, we need more of those events. Every weekend, we need some kind of event to bring the people in here. And I like Jim Wood. I think he left, but that's great. We're getting the rails because if we put those rails in there, that will show we're making progress and people like to follow a good idea. And so this town is moving into the 20th century, Harry, in spite of curmudgeons like you. That's all.
Thanks, Cam. Larry?
I just want to add just a little bit to what Harry said. I think that the, when I started talking like a year and a half ago or so about the roundabout sign and that we could improve upon a sign that said only Colfax, which people already knew when they got there. And I think the sign that's there now, I think it took us a couple iterations, but I think the sign that's there now is pretty good. It's unfortunate the angle that it sits at, but it does show that Colfax has a downtown. And the word historic, which is the word I wanted, is the most important word on that sign. So I think that's a good step. I also attended the music event on Saturday and it was absolutely child friendly. There was kids running all over the place and it was extremely well attended. And I had to leave early because I was, am involved in a, a big membership drive at a radio station. But people were happy and having a good time. And the beer line was 40 foot long, the entire hour and a half I was there. And it just seemed like it was a great thing. The whole notion of a free concert downtown is really a good one. And I'm, I'm overjoyed to learn that we're going to continue on that path, even if we don't win the Levitt. And I've talked with Aaron before about also the owners of the theater, about putting on a concert there, a group that I know that will fill that place. And that effort is just starting now also. And that would happen sometime over the winter. So I, I believe in music. I believe music is the single best way to attract people downtown, especially people that don't even know it's here.
Hey. We're a mile away. What's going on? We gotta face it, figure out where I need to be.
It was great. So thank you, Aaron.
Pass the tongue. Thank you, Trinity.
So I also went to the event on Saturday. And again, it was nothing short of fantastic. We loved it. Food vendors were great. Music was great. I couldn't have asked for a birthday party. It was my birthday that day. So it was really, really fun. Other than that, I don't have any committee reports tonight. I, I'm just now coming back from medical leave, so I'm happy to be here. I'll pass it to Carolyn.
Good.
All right. It was fortunately one of those time periods where it was more fun than it was meetings to go to. I had, we had coffee and conversations a week ago, two ago. I know Larry and I and Ron all attended that one with the chamber. Monday I was in SAC with Secog. We had the salsa cookoff, which was the first fundraiser for the third of July for next year. We had, oh my gosh, I can't remember. I think 15 salsas off the top of my head. Seventeen, is that what it was? Sean had heartburn all the next day, I'm sure from being a judge. And then Ron and I were lucky enough to go to a reception that Union Pacific did for Placer officials. Sean ditched us unfortunately. Yeah, it was, it was a lot of fun. But yeah, so it was more fun stuff than meetings this week. So it was awesome.
Right. I had a few more meetings than, than fun, but I did get to attend the first responder dinner, put a, a first responder appreciation dinner put on by the VFW and American Legion. It was a great event. It was great to see our first responders there and good food. I think that was the fifth year they've done that. And I also have the honor of presenting the post with a certificate of appreciation and recognition from Congressman Kevin Kiley. That was a huge honor, as well as getting invited to speak. And let's see, I attended the salsa cookoff and that was great. Only had a little bit of heartburn the next day. Not too bad. All the salsas were delicious. LaFco meeting and fire safe council meeting. LaFco is looking for a new executive officer. So if anybody wants to be LaFco's executive officer in Blas County, good time to start putting applications coming up. Yeah, definitely. But don't tell them that. I mean, if you get people to apply. But, and that was pretty much all I had. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Yes. As Caroline mentioned, I attended the Union Pacific Heritage Fleet event, a meeting for the accounts, county officials and city officials. Fabulous old, hundred year old cars restored, everything working perfectly. Just incredible woodwork artwork inside between the, the way the upholstery was done, carpeting, the way the walls were done. It was really, really fun to go look at. If you're a fan of history, it was, it really made my day. I too attended the first responder event. It was great, great crowd, lots of people. It was good to see a lot of people there. And again, I, I made it to the music event in the park. Fabulous. I come driving into town, had a hard time finding a parking spot. So you know that's a good event when you can't find a parking spot. City maintenance, of course, with the winter season coming, we filled all the empty maintenance positions that we had. So they've been out doing pothole patching Canyon Way, South Auburn, vegetation clearing along Canyon Way, cleanup around Roy Tom's area and cleanup around the depot, pressure washing, vegetarian, vegetation cleaning, that kind of thing. And that's all I have.
Forgot one other thing. I attended the, or at least got stopped by the cornhole tournament that the Lions put on. That was a great event. It was really well attended. Looked like everybody's having a lot of fun. All right. We will move on to item eight, council business. First item tonight will be discussion on our, on our new policy for donating to nonprofits. City manager?
This item was introduced at the last city council meeting and has been brought back tonight for further discussion. At the last council meeting, the mayor asked council members, send me information on what they wanted to see in it. Still waiting. So there'll be lots of discussion tonight. And it's glad to see Trinity's back because she had some ideas on that as well. They didn't get shared last time. So we've been ahead.
All right. Thank you. All right. Trinity, you want to kick us off since you didn't get in on the discussion last time?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask. I'm trying to pull up my draft right now. Sorry, one second. I had put together some information that I was hoping to share with council that I didn't get a chance to before the meeting. Otherwise it may have been able to have been included in the agenda. One moment. All right, here we go. So my suggestion on this item regarding donations to nonprofits was, if, if I'm going to give like a simple overview, was that we establish a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that we would work in partnership with in order to have the decision. in order to have the decisions on nonprofit funding go to a board that is unique from the city, but would have two council members on it representing, along with representation from the other nonprofit organizations, so that we can have a broader community input on the use of those dollars, as well as more opportunities for fund matching, more opportunity for grants, more opportunity for philanthropy to be available from outside organizations that we're not eligible to currently accept as a city or that organizations are not willing to donate to as a city. Additionally to that, part of my suggestion was that we look at the funds that we give to nonprofits, not only from the perspective of taking from the general fund, but also from the position of opening public trust funds in our budget. Some of you guys on your property bills may have noticed that there is a checkbox at the bottom where you can opt to donate additional funds to different nonprofit initiatives through the trust funds in the county. And so the concept there would be that we would then be able to accept public funds through fundraisers and other efforts towards specific initiatives like road maintenance, youth programs, arts, and, you know, different events in town. We would set up specified here marked trust funds that people can actually donate to, and that would, you know, be eligible for us to go after matching grant funds. An example, several local cities in California have successfully been able to get affordable housing grant matches through these public trust funds that they built. So it's made them eligible for a lot more government money in addition to working with, you know, a 501(c)(3), where then you can get private philanthropy to then pour more money into our town. I think we've just got a very narrow focus that we could really broaden by establishing these funds and establishing a 501(c)(3). So that's, that's basically all I've got. And I don't know what you wanna pass it back to you.
All right, thank you. That opens up a whole nother avenue of discussion that we're gonna need to go down or.
Oh, sorry, to tie that up in a ribbon, I think we should have a policy that we would need to discuss further at a subsequent meeting, because that policy would be more robust than just a policy decision. It would also include the establishment of these additional tools.
Should we decide?
Because I don't think, from my perspective, that simply deciding yes or no, or how we wanna give funds is gonna be the most advantageous route for us to go.
So that was quite a bit. All right, glad to have you back. Been a little while since you've been on the mic comments, so. Piling it all on. That's all right. So we can continue discussion on the item that's on right now. And then if we want, we can just roll it all into a future discussion at the next meeting.
Well, I think it's almost a two-step process. I think if we start with the initial, what we're talking about here, kind of an outline for the future, for next year, knowing that that's where it's going to lead to. I think we could, because my fear is if we all of a sudden folk, if we go to the primary focus separate, setting that 501(c)(3) and getting that board, we still have to have this part done first for that even to be able to.
I would disagree, because I would say that by establishing a 501(c)(3), you're leaving the significant majority of these decisions to that 501(c)(3)'s board to make these decisions on the allocation. So that takes some of the liability and responsibility out of the hands of the city and puts it to a third-party nonprofit. We would be restricted to deciding how much we're willing to use for discretionary funding that would fall into the category of public aid. And then we would leave it to the 501(c)(3) to determine at that point, which again, council representation would sit on that board, to decide, you know, the nuances and who's eligible. And I think having that separation from us might be very advantageous, because unfortunately, we're always gonna be in such a small town in a position where you really can't avoid the appearance of favoritism or, you know, oh, well, they asked first, but this one has more merit. That's a really uncomfortable position to be in as an elected official. But doing it from the perspective of a nonprofit board is a little bit different, and the protections and liabilities are different. So, you know, so it's definitely a lot to think about, but it does go hand in hand with this. Because if we choose to go forward with ironing out all these details, and then we establish that, and that board says we wanna go totally different, you know, we have different expectations, then it could be a lot of staff time that we're pouring into something that ultimately didn't work. So that's kind of my thoughts. I think the policy decision itself, we should probably first decide, are we willing to discuss my proposal before we set a policy? Or are we wanting to iron out a policy and then discuss that? It's kind of the.
How do you see it's? Because I see one of the challenges is if we take this account as what we're considering now, this, you know, thirty thousand that we have. And in essence, it's turned over to that group.
Right.
We're handing them taxpayer dollars at that point and taking us out of some of the responsibility of it. And that makes me nervous, because that is our responsibility.
And I would argue thirty thousand dollars is too much in that context. And it should make us come back and question, how much are we allocating? And should that money be coming from our general fund? Or should it be through seeking outside funding and filling those coffers from other sources? I would say the best example we could look to would be, look at Placer County, Placer County's Placer Community Foundation, and the way that the county's relationship works with the Placer Community Foundation. Because a lot of programs that are actually sponsored by the county are actually administered by that third-party 501(c)(3), which gives them a lot of flexibility in the type of projects they can take on, the type of things they can get involved with, and the type of contributions they can make and receive. And so, you know, to Sean's earlier point, I think that we do need a future agenda item to consider that, because not only do we not have that specifically agendized tonight, I think all the council members should probably go take a look at that and try to understand how that relationship works and how it's benefited the county.
I'm definitely not against it. I think it's a great idea to have a group that really does work more to get additional outside funds, and it's not just coming from us. I love that idea. It's just that responsibility for the taxpayer funds that makes me.
Sure, I would say from a policy perspective, we started with a concept that came out of what felt like necessity, and it has spiraled and snowballed quickly into being a lot more money and a lot more purpose in a very short window of time. Started with a very large allocation for one purpose, which then became nonprofits in general, which then became schools also, which, you know, and the amount of money allocated to it has grown exponentially since 2020. So in a five-year period, you know, we've got quite a lot to consider here. And maybe we need to take a step back and say, do we wanna keep doing it the way we're currently doing it?
I think to add to what Trinity said, it almost seems like we, we need to figure out what that entity should be before we set up the rules. And, and we really don't. I know originally Trinity suggested a nonprofit. 501(c)(3). 501(c)(3) has a lot of nuances that we really haven't talked about and which this document don't address. But the last bullet under three is the one that said the staff should do this. And I don't, I don't think that. Shall I wait? I don't think that the staff should be burdened with this. And I think it's a job that would be hard to fill. I like the idea of a separate group. Whether it should be a nonprofit, I'm not really sure. But, you know, I have formed a couple of 501(c)(3)'s. And our definitions here are very vague. And I'm just gonna read a couple of things. For example, a 501(c)(3) means it's both tax-exempt and the donations are tax-deductible, both of those. And that's a 501(c)(3). And they have to operate for these purposes. Religious, charitable, education, scientific, literary, or prevention of cruelty to children or animals. Those are the different purposes a 501(c)(3) must operate under.
As well as public benefit.
And there's more, more to it. Those are the just broad definitions. And then there are some other examples. There's a 501(c)(4), which is civic and social welfare-type corporations. A 501(c)(5) is labor, agriculture, or horticultural. 501(c)(6) is business leagues. 501(c)(7) are social and recreational. 501(c)(8) fraternal beneficiary-type organizations, such as the Knights of Columbus. There's a 501(c)(10), which is a fraternal domestic, and it's more of a lodge like the Masons. There's a 501(c)(19), that's veteran organizations. There's a 527 that are political. There's all kind of definitions here. So our notion of a 501(c)(3) maybe needs to be narrower, because we contradict ourselves in this list, saying we won't give any money to religious organizations. So we need to clean that definition up. And I'm sure Connor is the best person to, to tell us how to do that. Some of the items in particular. Establishing a level of matching percentage, I think that's good. That's something we should do, that will help us a lot. Requiring a report on how the donation benefited the community as a whole, I think that's a good idea. Addressing concerns about requiring an audit of how the funds were spent, I think that's reasonable, but not if it's detail. Considering the use of an outside organization or subcommittee, that's the thing that Trinity brought up and that we were talking about. Ensuring that the city does not dictate how the funds are spent. I support that idea. I think that on a broad basis, it's okay. But I don't think it's up to us to tell these organizations exactly how to spend their money. Grant donation policy, one of the items that I don't care for says defines allowable and non-allowable expenses. And that is just, to me, not advised, because it's too subjective. It's too controlling. Under written agreements, MOUs, or contracts, it says we can claw back provisions if funds are misused. I don't like that at all. I don't like the idea of clawing back money that we've granted. We have to be more careful in how we allocate that money. But I don't believe in clawbacks. I think they're, they're bad. To dictate how the money is spent is far too vague. I'm okay with not using for political, religious, or lobbying. And I'm going right down the document, by the way, because I think we've touched on this before. I think we're gonna have to put out what, what we call that IBM, a straw man, some, some sort of a document that we put together that we can address directly, rather than just a format for discussions. The city reserves the right to audit funding organizations. I think that's going too far. Let me see, what else did I know down here? We're supposed to ensure the community, not just a limited group benefits. That's rather subjective. That's something we need to determine upfront before we allocate the money. As I mentioned, now we're down to item two. Be recognized as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit or equivalent charitable entry. We need to flesh that out. That's just, it's too generic. Some types of 501(c)s, like I mentioned, we're not going to donate to. Let's see. Again, under item five, a clawback provision. I don't believe in clawbacks. They're not working well on a national scene right now, to say the least. I don't think they're appropriate. It says the organizations must submit a report sixty days, within sixty days of how they expended the funds. That's rather soon, since we're more often granting funds far in advance of either events, events or things that come to fruition. I think that's too specific. Also, under item six, somebody is supposed to report on the number of residents served. I don't see there's any way that we could know that. That's pretty impossible to know. And the last item, financial controls. I have no idea what that means. It says it'll be, they'll be made from the city's Economic Development Community Support Fund 8263, maintained through the general fund. I'm sure that probably Ron and Shannon know what that means, but I would like to see an explanation of that. Because the way I understood it, we had a special fund that we allocated for nonprofit organizations. And that's way vaguer than this, this agreement, but. Is that what this last item seven means? Is that what that is?
That is the fund that is set aside for those allocations, yes.
The nonprofit, okay. Because at one time, when I first got on the council, the people up here were calling it the fireworks fund. And I said, no, that's not a fireworks fund. That's not the way it was defined. Although after the marijuana farm left and stopped funding all our fireworks around here, that's the way it got used. And I took issue with that and encouraged us to have a nonprofit fund. So I still believe pretty strongly in that song. Now I know what it's called, thank you.
Yeah, that's the official fund in the budget, and the official funding number.
Okay.
And so, sorry for the confusion.
Okay. So I realize that's a laundry list. Should I provide that in writing? Okay, I will. And at some point, we need some sort of a document that can be a basis for discussion, so that we're all talking about the same thing at the same time.
And just to be clear, I sent staff a formal memo with proposed resolution text that I will ask them to circulate to the rest of council. So you guys do have something to look at to get started, at least with the next meeting. But ultimately, what you're describing, Larry, that we would need to see in front of us before formally adopting anything, I think are bylaws, which fall in line with the concept of going the 501(c)(3), you know, route. So having strong bylaws in place help ensure accountability and allow future flexibility. So definitely curious what our public has, Douglas.
Thank you all for indulging me.
Kim?
Okay, pleasantly surprised to see that nobody has left during this. I noticed that the city attorney's eyes were beginning to glaze over. No, just kidding. Okay, I have, I have just seventeen points to go over. Oh, no, just kidding. No. I, I agree. I think we should come back with what Trinity recommended and take it from there.
Quick seventeen points, excellent. So I think I'd be more in favor of looking at like, like a MAC-type committee or something, an advisory committee, as opposed to putting it all in a separate 501(c)(3), because then we have different management, different, different rules. We do cover our donations within the city. If stuff comes to us donated, we do cover it under tax exempt status, so.
I'm kind of with you. I mean, we used to have advisory commissions here, and they had advisory power.
Right. Otherwise, we're looking at more like instituting something like the Green Machine. Basically, we're making a new Green Machine, basically, if we, if we start a different 501(c)(3), because that's what the Green Machine's mission was.
Kind of. And you're not wrong, but there is some nuance. Like 501(c)(3)'s have different authority when it comes to full authority. I can't speak today. Different types of giving, even though we are able to accept, you know, tax-exempt, there are certain types of donating organizations that can only donate to a 501(c)(3).
I know there's some nuances and stuff, but.
And so, all that to say, I mean, I know you still need a big public comment, but to be clear, even if we do consider that route, it doesn't mean we can't do a hybrid approach. So that's certainly an option also.
Definitely gonna need to look at a broader discussion now and just hold off. But anything else from the council? No? Okay, great. Any public comment on this item? Which one? Which one? Go ahead. All right. We have people online. Can you please?
Probably shouldn't bring this up, but you are aware that Sierra Vista is a five oh one C three?
Where, but missions are very specific as far as the tax allowable activities of each individual organization. Unless you are structured in your bylaws and your articles of incorporation for a specific benefit, you can't broadly reach.
Recreation.
You can't just, you know, appoint an existing nonprofit to a mission that they were not set out to do.
Okay. All right. Just a thought.
I think because of former lawsuits, we also have a unique arrangement with them that would be different than everybody else.
I love the idea of having some kind of advisory committee or whatever you guys refer to it as. I think that it would be helpful to have a set of guidelines for how this money is distributed so that it does get access in a fair manner, I would say. One of the points, when this shifted a little, so my points are a little off, so but I'm in the same anyways. Anytime that you're putting together, like you want to make sure that all the nonprofits are getting the equal benefit of this fund. And sometimes when you set up rules, things like a fifty fifty match, I completely understand the heart of that that approach, but I also know the value of sweat equity and what a smaller organization is doing in the community. And so when you look at a larger organization that's maybe running big events, that event has a following, let's call it. It's been happening for decades in the town. People know about it. It's a more marketable event. It's easier to get sponsorships. It's easier to get vendors to sign up. And it typically is a very profitable situation. So they could walk away with five to ten, fifteen thousand dollars in profit at the end of the event. And so they have this ability to do a fifty fifty match when you have other organizations that might not. So our organization was very privileged to receive a chunk of the funds this year. And we really were granted that on more of a sweat equity perspective. And so when we launched our organization, yes, we raised the money to set the organization up and do the initial launch. But a lot of our efforts were focused on marketing Colfax as a whole, marketing other organizations' events and other businesses to attract opportunities to Colfax. And so if you had put that fifty fifty match on us, I don't think that we would have had to take our foot off the gas of what we were doing for Colfax and go out and raise some money so we could get some more. And it would have taken us off our mission. And so with that five thousand dollars that the city gifted us, which we are so totally grateful for, we were able to continue our tourism website and social media presence and build it to thousands of people that are interested in Colfax. We were able to put on a brand new event, the Colfax Bazaar, brought a thousand people to town. And we would have never been able to launch these new ideas that had zero momentum without the help from that fund. So I'm so grateful for that. In addition, it helped fund our Rock the Vote concert. So this whole idea of us going out and essentially marketing Colfax as a whole helped us attract this grant, made it into the top one hundred, as you know, had to throw a concert together in two, two and a half weeks, three weeks. And if I didn't have that money or we didn't have that money in that fund, we could have never pulled that off to make it into the top fifty. And we even used part of that money to help us launch a brand new event, Heinz and Grooves, which was, as we know, tonight was a very successful event. So I would just ask that when you're putting together these rules or you're making this modification, which I totally love, just think about sweat equity and making it an even playing ground for everybody.
Thank you. We got five minutes.
I'm it's going to be quick. I kind of disagree with the whole, the bigger events and the smaller events. And I think that the bigger events have to come up with more money. We started with zero funds on the third of July and with somebody that had no idea what they were doing and put a lot of sweat into raising the funds to match the funds that we asked for from the city to keep this event that you say is, you know, a known event and happens every year and gets bigger sponsorships, which we have to work for those sponsorships as well. We have to go out and we have to sell those. It's not a given. We do not just get handed that money because it's an event that happens every year and people know it happens. We actually had to go out and work for that money. We sweated our way through, starting from zero to make this event happen. And I still feel that we should have a fifty fifty match. I just think that we should put as much into the event to raise that money as we ask for back. And I I see that it's harder for the smaller events, but you're asking for less money too. And well, you you asked for five. We I think we asked for seven. Sixty eight. And we were a much bigger event and we still managed to make that money to make the event happen. And like I said, it's not a given. I don't care if it's a small event. I don't care if it's a large event. I don't care if it's an event that we know is going to happen every year or if it's a new event that we're just trying to throw out there. We are still putting the same sweat and the same energy into making this happen. And I still feel that we should match fifty fifty. Just think it should be done. I think we should put as much energy into making these events happen as having them happen. It just it takes that. It just takes that to make them happen. It doesn't. It doesn't deter from the end result. It just helps build to the end result. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Please come on up.
From the discussion tonight of this of this, from what the city council has been saying, I hear two choices or two directions to go with the original idea of establishing a policy. One from mayor is to have an advisory committee. And being that it would be purely advisory, it would be for the city council to accept or not accept the advice. The other from Trinity is to set up a separate organization in which the members of the city council would be on the board and have a say, but it would be independent of the city council. I have a couple of questions for Trinity based on what she was saying. I have a little bit of familiarity with five oh one C, although not as much as some of the people here. The first question, if I can remember, okay, I'll go for the second question because I remember what it was. You mentioned that the board under the bylaws would have two members of city council and would also have members from some or perhaps all of the other of the nonprofits. And someone else brought up the concern of if it's if it's the taxpayers' money that's from our city council that's being spent by this organization. And if the nonprofits outnumber the people from the city council who were on the board, would that what would be? How much control would the city have over the expenditure? That's that's one question. I have another as well, if I can remember what it is, but please go ahead.
So first, for that first question, it would depend on how large we would ultimately decide the board was. So my proposal that I'm hoping to have circulated to council for the next agenda is to direct staff to actually work with me on forming initial bylaws for us to take a look at, including the size of the board, the foundation of the board, et cetera, the rules that the board would be required to follow. One of the things that a lot of jurisdictions use these types of foundations for or these endowed accounts for is flexibility during emergencies. So being able to provide gift cards during the winter snowmageddon. That was one of the uses of one of these foundations. One of the issues we ran into during the river fire was that we were unable to support our fellow community members who spent all their tax money here in town daily, who live just on the other side of the city limits, but do pay a sewer bill. You know, we were not able to directly support them with city funds because they were not residents within our jurisdiction. Versus if we do have an endowment account through a foundation, we are able to provide that support. Going to your question around control, you are able within any foundation to have specific accounts that can only be used for specific purposes. So if the city is the one contributing a specified amount of money into the accounts of the foundation, we can still set rules around how that money can or cannot be used. But the good thing about having that representation from the other nonprofits on that decision-making board is you do level the playing field and remove the liability and the potential conflict of interest involved with council members who happen to sit on multiple boards, potentially being accused of having a, you know, a conflict of interest. And so we create that separation and that additional opportunity for community involvement in those decisions. Because ultimately, when we talk about putting our nonprofits in a position of power there, we're really talking about putting the hands more with the people because we're involving more people in the decision-making who are putting in that sweat labor and that sweat equity and who really should have a say at that table more than just being advisory. So to Sean's point, there are a lot of benefits to having an advisory board. And I do think we should do that. But that does not negate the opportunity that is involved with potentially setting up the structure.
Okay, thank you. That listening to that helped me to remember what my other question was.
Oh, good.
So, and by the way, I can see that there are a number of advantages to what you're suggesting. And I'm not going to try to repeat them because it's your idea. But my my other question was, you mentioned in your presentation that one example of a government entity, they had this sort of setup was Placer County. And I was wondering if you can name a few or a couple that are cities or towns that have something like that, because that would allow the Colfax City Council to go look and talk to those those cities and find out and the bylaws and find out how well that's working for them.
Yes. So I do know that Truckee, California and South Lake Tahoe, California have their own structures that are a combination of working with private foundations in combination with public trust funds where they've been able to successfully, they were able to get HCV, LHTF, matching grant funds. That's for affordable housing. I do not remember the full extension of that acronym. But the other thing that they were able to successfully do in South Lake Tahoe was strengthen their arts and community development grant access and competitiveness. Because when you do have a multi nonprofit community foundation like that, you can actually pool all your nonprofit funds in order to get your matching. And there's a lot of strategy you can do by working together as a community. And that is a big problem we have currently is the splintering of different groups not coordinating together. So it would be really great to see us all find some unity there and support each other.
Thank you for answering my questions and thank you for the additional time.
Absolutely. So I just got to comment on one thing that you had mentioned. So generally, if a council member is not paid by board that they're sitting on, there is no creation of conflict of interest. And that has been many, many times vetted through the FPPC, the Very Political Practices Commission.
So. Yes. And that's because we want to avoid accusations that are inaccurate. And I should have been a little more clear on that, that.
It does not create a conflict of interest if you're not being paid as a board member.
So it's not fair to people who are putting in that sweat equity to then be accused of wrongdoing for just trying to do their job. So.
Make sure I.
Removing that.
Throw that out there again.
Good thing.
That keeps coming up. So I know you weren't here for the last couple of meetings, but it's come up. Sorry, Harry, go ahead.
Back when we had the Yellow Pages, they used to do a lot of surveys. And what they found out was that you lose 10% of your market every year through death, moving, dissatisfaction, whatever. I don't think that's changed. As a matter of fact, I think Avenue some has helped it increase that people are leaving businesses and what have you. So with that being said, diversity is the key to getting your market share. And with the economy being what it is right now, whether you accept it or not, people are having a hard time spending their dollars. So every year, the event that we do here in town, third of July, especially with the one coming, it has to be bigger and better every time to keep people's attention. At the same time, when you factor in the 10% factor of losing people, what are you doing to offset that? And so to your point, yeah, the bigger events, yeah, okay. But the the little event, the new event is an unknown. It's going after a market that is new, like the concert. That was a good example. And as our population changes, I mean, we're not here forever. Even a jar of pickles has an expiration date. So, I mean, you don't know if you're going to be here tomorrow. To me, having the ability to look at something one over one has more merit. And if they're responsible people and they present a good program and they're not shysters or Cal Worthington with a dog spot and that kind of stuff, I don't see why we shouldn't fund it. But, you know, what are we doing? Same thing. What is, I mean, we got to start thinking outside the box. And as painful as that can be, nobody wants to be first. It's scary. But we got to do it. And we have, as I've said many times before, we have every opportunity to be the shining star of Placer County. We were at one time, a hundred years ago. We were the, we were it. Colfax, if you look at any of the pictures, what this place was, that Camp Twenty became Colfax. So it's time to reinvent the wheel, maybe, you know, do a little bit of outside the box thinking, but I just think that more one over one at an opportunity that comes to us, we should look at that that way and apply some guidelines.
Thanks, Eric. Any other public comment on this item? If I open it up for you, I got to open it up for everybody else. You can address us that the get of the order will bring something up so you can address it. Okay, another new public comment? Anything else from council?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a couple of comments. Just talk about some of the money that we've given out already. We gave money to the girls' basketball program at the high school. And I think Colfax Girls Basketball put Colfax on the map more than anything else that's happened in this town for the last 20 years. And we didn't ask for them to match. They could more than match, but we didn't ask those questions. We gave money to a railroad heritage group. And it was the first money they had. And they're using that money. They could not have matched it because that that was their first funds. They are building a description, I don't know what else to call it, that will allow them to reach out for grants. And they started out with nothing. Aaron's Group, the Downtown Colfax Association, which is intended and has a mission of benefiting everybody in Colfax, and it will. That was, they had raised some funds themselves, but matching that, I don't know, would have, I don't think it would have been a great idea. We gave some money to the Sierra Vista Center Farmer's Market so that they could provide music. And that farmer's market has grown by about 50%. We gave money for third of July that didn't have an organization at all. And all of those have turned out well. I could give more examples, but I saw a music festival that I was involved in that started out as a memorial and a celebration of life for one singer, one folk singer. And after 25 years, they had a two and a half million dollar entertainment budget and provided entertainment like Los Lobos and Emmylou Harris, and I could go on. So sometimes it would be good to fund an organization that has nothing because that's where the new ideas come from. Doing something different, requiring a grant, would give preferential, not preferential treatment. It would make it easier for the larger organizations to gain the money and take away the ability of some of the new and smaller organizations to take it. So I don't want to say anymore. And it's just, they're all different and that's the way it should be. And our decisions first should be about whether, what what sort of an entity we create. And our decisions first should be about whether, what, what sort of an entity we create. The second one would be, will it be advisory or decision-making? Thirdly, will these be guidelines or will they be requirements? The, these are the sort of things we have to talk about first. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Yeah. Another comment?
More of a potential motion on the table I'd like to make, but I'd, I'd like to ask council to direct staff to schedule a workshop rather than doing this necessarily on the next meeting, just because this is a very heavy topic, might need its own, its own time. For the specific purpose of discussing the establishment of a MAC group, trust funds and a community foundation, but all three subjects being involved in that discussion. Our municipal advisory committee, MAC group.
I don't think we need a motion for that. I think we just direct staff to do that. So let's start looking at some dates that we can do workshop, get some public input too.
Are we going to move forward with drafting a policy or no?
No, we are going to stay this item.
Okay.
And then I would just ask staff to please circulate what I sent over so far, just so council can look at it in advance.
And council member Hilberg, I would appreciate it if you could put your feedback in writing.
I will do.
Thank you.
Right. Clears med? All right. Perfect. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to item 8B, Quick Winter Fest Planning Report. Caroline, do you want to kick this off?
I can kick it off?
I can, yes. All right, I'll go for it. Okay, so we're planning Winter Fest. Yeah, moving along slowly but surely. And reached out, I guess I'm in charge of fundraising, so I've tried not to fail with that. Reached out, I'm reaching out to our vendors right now that have been had connections with the city, talking to a few other nonprofits and some other groups and trying to get some funds coming in. Looking at maybe trying to fundraising events. Thinking about something around Halloween, a pumpkin carving contest or something like that. And then maybe we can do a bikini car wash. You can all see me out there in a one piece and see how many people we can attract. We'll, we'll figure out something else. Try and raise more funds so we can do some more matching if, if we need some more funds.
All right. So our city staff is handling the vendor applications as they come in. Amanda and Shannon have worked on that. They have a spreadsheet that they keep updated for me. We filled up our food vendors really, really fast, which is awesome. So there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, right? Yeah, seven regular food vendors, three dessert vendors that are on there and all done. And then after that, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 of our craft vendors that are, and these are all paid done. Most of them have already provided all their insurance and all the things that they need for that. There's a little bit of follow-up. I know I send out application emails several times a week to different groups and unfortunately they, they kind of sit on them for a little while. I'm about ready to do another round on social media of pushing this out there to all the different, there's a lot of Facebook groups and stuff that are solely for events. So those will go out. And this one, this event, we don't do as many vendors as we have for the third or railroad days because it's only the two streets. So we didn't, we don't have to do quite as many on it, which is nice. I know I need to get Ron in a meeting with Stephanie to sign this contract for them doing the beer garden because I know we talked about that before. So I need to get those two connected so they can have that conversation about where we want to put it. We have had the conversations with the theater already about feeling out putting Santa in there. We're always hopeful that that's going to work. And if not, it'll be in here. The Bunko Babes are down to be the sponsor for Santa again. So we take care of the candy canes and that stuff. We still have all the decorations for it. That's donated by one of our locals. Our Santa is already confirmed as well. And in regards to the model train that we put in there, Wandering Railroad will do it if we need to, but I'm hoping the gentleman, Brian, that was the motorman that has moved up here, I'm hoping he's going to be able to do it for us because he's a local. So that's pretty much where we're at. So vendor wise, we're pretty close to where I would expect us to be right now. We should hopefully see a whole bunch more of them start, you know, coming in here in the next few weeks to get it finalized. People like vendors, kind of, some of the food ones are always first because they know there's hot competition and we limit that. The craft ones are usually a little bit slower to come in, but I'm, I, I feel pretty good about where it's sitting right now.
Awesome. I want to just get us to pay for it. All right. There's no action to be taken on this item. So.
I actually.
Sorry, you have a update?
Councilman Hilberg had asked that we agendize this and have the resolution signed that authorized the city manager to administrate and coordinate the event, including allocation and use of staff resources.
Before we've had that conversation, if I can sidetrack us over to Kim, because Kim I know was reaching out to, I think you were doing recology.
Right. I contacted him and he wants to do it and I want to do it the same way we did it last year. So it was.
Did they, did they send you the email that's, that gives you the link to go fill out the, the document for the official request?
Uh, no, but I'll call him back.
Okay, yeah, because he has to initiate, once you've talked to, oh, his name starts with a T, but it's not Tom. I think, I think it's Tony. He has to send you an email that'll have you a link to go fill out for the charitable donation. So you want to, you want to follow up on that? And he's usually pretty quick about getting those out. And then I can't remember if we had given, did I give you the guy's information for the porta potties and stuff? I thought I did. Johnny, you got that?
Right.
Okay. And then we had, we did receive another contact for fireworks that had done them previously for Winter Fest, but I had left them a voicemail to see if they can give us a better price than the guy in Reno that we've used previously. And I haven't heard back from him. So I'll follow up on that too. So you have a comparison advice on that one.
Well, you guys are probably letting me out because I've already contacted.
Right. I know we, we had talked to him. Yeah. Well, and I, I thought I'd given you them their phone number as well.
Yeah.
I can't remember. Okay. All right. I'll, I'll find that for you. Sorry. I didn't want us to get wrapped up in that.
Sorry, Larry, I missed that little bit down there on this. So would you like to comment on this and let us know what you wanted out of this?
Well, I know that the reason I backed away from being on the first ad hoc committee is that we hadn't agreed as a council to do it. And I asked that again the last meeting and now it's in front of us, a resolution to accept it formally as a project. So I'm pleased to see that. I'm happy to see that. But we're talking about minutia. And as far as I know, we don't even have a budget. And if a city is going to take on a project, we need a budget. How much money do we plan to take in? And how much money do we plan to spend? And then beyond that, where is that money going to come from? I don't think, we don't have enough information here to accept it yet. Does, does anybody I know how much this is going to cost? And if we do everything we want to, what is the cost? And where do we expect that money to come from? I know we're talking about vendors and we're talking about contributions. But this project isn't in a place that we can vote on it yet, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, we're talking about fireworks. I think the big expenses typically are the fireworks and probably security and maybe trash hauling. I, I really don't know. But we need a budget. And I don't see one. And I haven't heard one. And just rambling from up here behind the dais isn't enough. We really need to see what are the big items that we're going to be spending money on and how much are they? Like the restrooms, for example. What are the big ticket items that we're going to spend money on? And, and what is that total? And are we going to raise enough money somehow to pay for them? And I haven't heard any of that.
Well, I did say I'm working on raising money. I think.
We're, we're working on, no, I'm, how much money do we need to raise? That's the question I have. And for what?
Caroline, go ahead and answer how much roughly we spent last year. We're looking at about the same this year.
Yeah. So I can tell you that Amy was, had not yet been able to send me over the numbers that the chamber had used before. Her and I had contact, had conversations about that, but I have not received anything. Your expenses, what you're looking at running, because we don't have to factor in insurance expense because it's, should already be covered under the city. So we don't need to worry about that. Your marketing banners, things along those lines are going to run you only about a thousand dollars with what we need. So you're looking at about a thousand dollars for banners. Toilets are going to run you between three and $4,000. Just, I don't think we need as many as we had for the 4th of July, but we need more than, or 3rd of July. But we need more than what we have for railroad days. So you're going to run about, we'll just say 3,500 for your toilets. Your fireworks are going to run you roughly $12,000. We don't have expense when it comes to the trash because that is granted to us through recology. They take care of that bill in the pickup. So we don't have a trash bill that comes with that. Your permit to the county is $500. I'm writing these all down over here. So I have them in one pile. So I can add it together. Yeah. So yeah, your county permit's 500. Pretty sure we don't have to write the hundred dollar check to the city for the permit. And that, I mean, that should cover it. I know what we have originally talked about was.
So 17,000?
Yeah. So 20,000 is the original target that I had told Sean that we would be to look for. That, that's your target of what you want to be able to fundraise. However, that, whatever that looks like for Sean to be able to acquire that. 20,000 was the high end budget for it.
And I want to see this in writing, not just talked about from the frontier. We need this to be a formal budget. And another thing is, is there a cost for security or is that all donated?
We, there has not been paid security in the past. I know when we had the conversations regarding the parade, you had talked about, Sean had talked about reaching out to some of the companies about the road closures and security and getting a quote from them. And I don't, I'm guessing we haven't had a chance to do that, but that is something that had been discussed pre.
Yeah, we don't have a quote back on that yet. And that was more for the 3rd of July, not so much Winter Fest because we have a smaller crowd and easier to parade route. So we're kind of working on that for 3rd of July, but looking at that, I think we'll be okay for Winter Fest on that. Our, we do usually get another deputy and we have Cal Fire hanging out. So, and those are both covered under our contract for the event stuff. So no additional expense for the security.
I have a question.
I don't, I don't know enough to vote yet.
Any chance we know how much we spent as a city, just the city itself on Winter Fest last year?
Like what the donation was? I actually have that in a computer because I know Shannon wouldn't have that right here. Give me one second and I'll find it.
Sorry, Sean.
No, I, I, I saved it. Hold on, I've got a.
No worries if it's.
And while you're looking in there, there, there will be an extra $500 for additional insurance.
Is that what they're going to charge us? 500 for that? Okay. Let me add that to it. Give me a second because I made a spreadsheet just so I didn't have to keep asking her what we did with that money. But where did I hide it? Yeah, I did. I, I put a thousand dollars in there for that. And I know I still need to get that to you. Because we had, the, the design is already, the marketing stuff is already done. It was in a spreadsheet.
So she's looking for that. So the previous meeting, we authorized the city to collect the money, the, the donations. So city staff has already approved to work on that. Other than that, other than the accounting for the donations, the city staff and handling the normal paperwork and things they would, city staff isn't really being involved. It's me, Carol and Caroline that are, that are doing it all. So we, we appreciate them taking in the funds, but it's not directing a whole lot of extra work with all the staff. And we'd already approved that amount of work. So it's been approved already.
Okay. So I just pulled it up.
Winter Fest was 7,000?
See.
I got to it.
See, had to be faster than me. Yeah. So last year we gave Winter Fest 7,000. They gave them 8,100 the year prior to that. 6,500. So, yeah, I mean, we've seen between 6,500 and 81. So.
So just throwing a suggestion out there for the resolution, because we can always amend it.
Or just not make a resolution.
Well, I feel like right now Larry does have a few valid concerns, just given the fact that the city has never taken the liability for this event before in this capacity. I would recommend that if we're going to spend over last year's budget, it should come back to council from, if it's coming from city funds. So my recommendation would be that we would authorize a not to exceed amount of $7,000 on the part of the city, not to include in-kind donation of labor. Unless we bring it back, you know, for budgetary approval, because if we use more of the public funds without prior approval for something like this, I don't think it's a very good look.
The city, the city is not giving any funds tonight. We're not looking at any allocation of funds or anything like that. This is just supposed to be an, an initial report on what's going on. And Larry now has, has asked if we want to make a motion to officially assign city staff to this beyond what we've already done previously.
But he has a good concern about a loophole.
I didn't say that.
The, the loophole we have here tonight is that our city manager does have the authority to spend funds up to a designated amount at his discretion. And so I understand why there would be a, a need to, for an event or for any expenditure, especially one that's high profile, to say before we spend any funds, we're agreeing that this is the amount. So if we're saying we're not spending any funds at this time, I'm totally fine with not putting forward a resolution tonight. But Larry had asked for the resolution to go on the agenda. So I would just say when we're ready to approve the expenditure of funds, I would just ask that staff put it in front of council with the budget so that it is clear since it is high profile and apparently there is some lack of consensus among council. Personally, I feel rather neutral on this. I missed several meetings regarding it. I don't want to be the decision maker on it. I just feel like Larry does have some good points and deserves to have someone backing him up. So I would just ask before we spend money, if we could put a budget in front of council for approval, that'd be great.
Yeah. Just like any other ask for a non, for fund donations for an event, it's going to go the same way.
Because I do understand, like, you know, again, he, our city manager can technically, he could just throw funds at it right now, unless we say otherwise.
I can provide him general direction right now. Don't just throw funds at, at Winter Fest without city approval. Thank you.
Please don't spend money on it.
Now we don't have to do a vote.
Perfect.
But Larry, what did, what did you want to add there?
Well, I heard that we were negotiating about fireworks that might cost $12,000 and that's a lot of money. The last time we had a meeting here, there was some argument from behind the dais here that we should not award money to a nonprofit that was asking for it because of other items that we need to spend money on. And one of the ones that was listed was fireworks for Winter Fest. And I don't believe it's appropriate to take money that the city's going to spend from our nonprofit fund. And so I feel really strongly about that. I think that is just flat wrong. And, you know, if we're willing to kick in $12,000 out of the general funds for fireworks, that's a different question, but I can't even tell now where that money is going to come from.
Well, but we, the, the, we agree with the staff direction. We're just not going to spend any money on the event from the city coffers and.
Right. So.
We actually looked at and discussed and.
Nobody's talking about getting any money from the city tonight. That we're just discussing general expenditures and what I have to try and go out and get donations for. That, that's what, 20,517.5? So we need to raise about 70,500 in donations. The, the last place that that money will come from is the city fund, the city nonprofit fund. So I will be doing everything I can to raise those in-kind donation funds and beyond to make sure that we cover what we need for the event. I'm going to do my best.
I'm okay with all that. It just seemed to me like we were spending money already.
Nope.
But it isn't significant. But again, I would, you know, I'll lay down on the road in front of a truck to keep us from using some of that nonprofit money for something that the city is taking on. We should not be moving funds around like that. And it's nice to know that our budget at least is around $20,000. And that's a good start. Now we need to make a better estimate of how much we think we can raise. And it sounds good as long as we don't spend any of it yet.
Okay, Kim? Okay, Kim?
Look, the girl I just gave you was, she'll supply that truck. No, I, I had two, no, I had two, two small things I wanted to say. What did we spend for fireworks till I third? Was it about twelve K? And I was hoping it'd be cheaper in the off-season, but maybe not. And the other thing, small thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, you know, Festival of Lights in Auburn, our big competition, is always the first Saturday. And I, I brought this up before, but we need to consider every year whether we want to do it the same day they're doing theirs, or one Saturday later. That's all. I just wanted to bring it up and have that part of the conversation, that's all. Thank you.
Great. Caroline?
If, I just want to add a side note, that one of the reasons we chose to increase that account's budget from twenty to thirty thousand was because of the coverage of the fireworks for those two events. So I, I do understand your, your statement of, if the city's sponsoring it, then we shouldn't be taking money out of there. But we did increase that fund solely because of that, so that way we had more money for the other things. And just to tell you in addition, we already have just over three, three thousand dollars from the vendors that have already paid. With my estimate of what we would add in for additional, we'll have over five thousand of that total budget paid through the vendor. So that takes a little bit of leeway off of you. But yeah, about five thousand of it will come off your vendor fees, and so that all goes into the expense of that event as well. So that, like I said, we're already over three thousand on the plus side at this point, so.
I, I just want this budget to be a public discussion, not something that we're keeping inside.
Yeah, everything is going to be a public discussion about this. That's why we, that's, you know, we're going to keep coming. We'll, we'll make sure we update it every meeting from now until Winterfest, so two more meetings.
Two more meetings.
So we'll make sure we have an update on there for what's going on, how much funds we've raised. And probably at that last meeting, so the, the meeting before Winterfest, I'll be asking for whatever, whatever I'm short or what we can do out of what's left from, from the, from the nonprofit funds.
I, I just keep looking at that last item. Said now, therefore be it resolved by the city council or the city of Colfax approves and authorizes the city manager to administer and coordinate it, this year's Winterfest event, including the allocation of use and city resources. And given that we don't have a budget, I have a lot of trouble with that.
I, I think we all agreed that that resolution is not agreeable, and we're probably not going to pass it tonight. And I'm prepared to make a motion that we do not. So I think we're on the same page more than we sound like we are.
There, there's no real need for the resolution anyway. The city manager's not putting in any extra work or anything beyond what he'd do for a normal event. Right? Really? So the only extra additional staff time that's being added is the accounting by a city staff member and Shanna to make sure that those funds are properly put in a, a separate account just for the event, that are raised specifically for that event. So there's, other than that, and we already authorized that staff time, so.
There's trust fund.
There you go. Look, we're already way ahead of you. So.
I second Charlie's motion, by the way.
To not, yeah, we can just, just say no motion, we're not going to take action, so that'll be fine. I'm going to bring it out, if we're good. All right, I'm going to bring it out for public comment. How about, you can go up to the mic, yeah?
Maybe we should have a mic, you guys can surround the features.
Get everybody, we're getting everybody there exercised.
Just, just a, a quick question from a business point of view. I never hear us talk about how much money we're going to make, or hope to make. All I ever hear is how much we're going to spend.
That is really the answer.
And the other thing, the other thing is, like Caroline learned, the baker, that when you buy in volume from one particular person, you can get a discount. So my, my question is, if we were on a record of how many times a year we buy fireworks, why aren't we getting the, the, the deal?
We, we previously were getting a better deal on the Winterfest fireworks, but I think because we've made it so popular, they know that we want to do it. And they're like, no, no more discounts for you, so.
It may work out later on with, you know, if we keep using the same company. But the fact of the matter is, they have costs that they have to cover. And, and, and as I was told this year, when we were setting up the fireworks, their costs have gone up. So they're not going to give us nothing for nothing, you know? They're not going to give us something for nothing. That's it. He's got costs, he's got to cover. And, and in all honesty, we got lucky this year by going with the company that we did, because a lot of places in our area did not have fireworks, which actually did benefit us, because we ended up with a lot of extra people, which we did make some money. So you are looking at making money back on this to look at it that way. Harry's right. You've got to look at the bigger picture. You, you guys only put out sixty-eight hundred towards the fireworks this year, so you're not looking at twelve thousand, Larry, with the fundraising, the vendor.
Caroline is the one that said twelve thousand, I was just repeating it.
That is the, the total cost, but with, with the fundraising, the vendors, you're, you're bringing money in, and you will have, you know, you'll, you'll have funds to put towards that. And then, and to look at it this way too, putting that money back out for the fireworks, with, whether the city's doing this or not, you're putting that money back out, whether it's coming from the nonprofit or not. That was coming from the nonprofit, whether the city was going to do it, or a nonprofit was going to do it. That money was going to be asked for anyways, and it was already set aside, or not, maybe not set aside, but it was always figured into that nonprofit fund, period. So you're not looking at a full twelve thousand dollars out on fireworks. You're looking at, with fundraising and all that, you're looking at, 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 uh, half of that. And it should come out of the nonprofit. That would have came out of the nonprofit if the city did not get this landed in their lap, and, and the nonprofit that was running it, was running it again this year. And at the end, you guys will make money back on this, so whatever you put out, you're probably going to get back. Yep, let's hope.
Thank you for your explanation.
All right, um, any more public comment on this item? No? So it sounds like we have a pretty good consensus, we're just not going to take action, just leave it as a report. And we provided staff the direction of, yeah. Perfect.
Sean, come on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm trying. All right. I'll go ahead and move on to item eight. See then, this is an agreement for employee satisfaction survey, so I'll give a little bit of background, and then I turn it over to Connor. Thank you. Sorry. Uh, so the city has reached out to a company called Shelby HR Solutions to kind of provide us with a employee satisfaction survey, so we can get a, another baseline of how our employees are feeling. We want everybody to be happy here and feel like they're supported and getting what they need, so that's kind of the idea behind this. And, uh, hopefully it'll turn out good. We'll get some suggestions after the satisfaction survey and see what's coming on. Uh, Connor, do you want to fill in?
Sure. The item before the council is in agreement with Shelby HR Solutions Incorporated. Ms. Shelby, the, the council had asked me to make some suggestions on conducting an employee satisfaction survey. Ms. Shelby has done some work for the city of Auburn. She has experience doing these surveys for some private companies in the area. I understand mostly grocery stores, but also some law firms. She's excited about doing this. She gave us a good rate. This is much lower than her, the rate she offers private companies, and it's comparable to other services like MRG, which is another popular consulting firm we've worked with before. This would be private one-on-one conversations with the city's nineteen or so staff off-site. With Ms. Shelby, she would do a report to my office. The report would be confidential, and I would in turn do a presentation to the city council. And depending on the council's feedback, they'll have, they'll have some data to, data to work with on how, how they want to address what comes up during the survey. It's fifteen thousand dollars, flat rate, plus Ms. Shelby's reasonable expenses, travel, food. She's in Sacramento, so I wouldn't expect hotel costs, but IRS mileage, lunch, that kind of thing. So again, this is something the council asked me to bring forward. If you, Sean and Caroline met with Ms. Shelby, so they can answer questions about her. If you'd like me to bring forward some other options, we can do that. If you are no longer interested in pursuing this project, that's fine too. So that's the item.
All right, so, um, like Connor just said, we did meet with Ms. Shelby, and I was honestly impressed. I thought she brought some good stuff to the table, had some good ideas, and probably and handled this survey and providing us with good direction to go from it pretty well. So that was kind of my two cents. I'm going to go ahead and move down the aisle. Kim, you want to comment on this item?
Oh, uh, sure. Since she's going to be here, would it cost any extra to have a council member happiness survey?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
Nobody cares how happy you are.
I don't know if I was going to that.
Larry?
I think if it's good for you guys, I'm okay with it.
Do you, Trudy?
I, I think fantastic work finding, Ms. Shelby. I'm really excited about this, and just wanted to say for the public's benefit, for those who aren't aware, during our annual accounting audit, one of the things that's required of us is our lovely mayor here is required to answer a set of questions, and one of the questions, sets of questions he needs to ask is about internal controls and accountability, and the possibility of fraud. And doing a survey like this helps us be aware of opportunities that could result in things like fraud, whether intentional or unintentional. So I think that while fifteen thousand dollars may sound like a lot of money, it's actually a very diligent move from both a staff retainment perspective, as well as an accounting perspective, and to make sure we have clean audits.
Thank you. Caroline?
I was quite impressed with her. I really enjoyed some of the directions she likes to go in with her questions. And we all know that retaining employees definitely needs to be a priority, because it's very expensive to replace them, both financially and emotionally as well, on the stress level. So while on one hand, I'm like, oh, there's so many things we could do with that, keeping our staff up and happy and running and everything is, is well worth the investment.
Great, thank you. Public comment on this item? Tom?
Yeah, Tom Panham, former employee of the city. I want to commend you for this and recognize the importance of employee morale. However, I think this is the wrong way to implement a good idea. When I worked for the city and I saw something like this, it, it was a morale killer. Take that fifteen thousand dollars and split it up amongst the employees. It'll do much better for the city. It'll help the employees be happy. I think this, I think, I, I, I think this is a waste of money. I really do. I mean, give the money to the employees. If you want good morale, and get that little extra out of them, I think the money would be better spent that way than to have this survey. And then the attorney's going to work on it, and then it's just, nothing's going to change. If you really want good, you know, happy employees, say, we're going to give you this bonus. And then hand them all a blank piece of paper and write down anonymously what you like and don't like, and figure it out. Fifteen thousand is just a waste of money.
Thanks, Tom. Any other public comment? No? We, oh, go ahead. And we did at least just do our, our contract negotiations, that got approved, so. We're, uh, we, they did get raises.
They did, that's right.
And we didn't have to raise so rich to do it. Hopefully feeling a little better. We're going to renegotiate in January. Sorry, go ahead, Kim.
Yeah, uh, I can appreciate what Tom has said. I've gone through many surveys in the past also. When you get this old, you just happen to go through those. Some are good, some are not quite so good. It is too good to keep the morale of the employees up. I guess my question is, why at this point is this being brought up? I do know that you, right now you have three new employees. A, another one. Now, this is not staff-wise, though. This is our financial counselor who will be leaving, so you're going to be fulfilling that as long as that's all public knowledge. From what I understand, that with this going on, and you having this survey now, are there issues that you're aware of with the employees, why you have to bring in somebody to do a survey? Or is it possible, and a lot of times this helps out internally, to find out what the reasons are and how they can be affected? I realize what Tom is saying, to give, you know, out of the fifteen thousand dollars, everybody that much money, that's a quick fix. That's not a long, long-term fix. If there are issues that the staff is going through, and even talking to staff, whether it's from an outside business or internal, there is always hesitation from that employee of, is this going to get back to my boss? And so it's very hard to determine just how to go about something like this. So I'm just, you know, I'm wondering if there is, if, is reasons, you know, that you can do internally and figure it out and/or maybe go with this survey that would work out equally. But I agree with Tom, that I think it is a very good thing that you're trying to keep the morale and the employees here. Because I do know it is hard in a small city like this to compete with the other entities that are around here. And I'm not sure, I know I always talk to other city managers, what are some other benefits that the city can provide? Not just monetarily, possibly time off. I have talked to Ron. I understand when you do give time off, that is money coming out of your budget still. But these kind of other perks that you can look at, you know, can be discussed. But like I say, I think what you guys are doing right now is, is a good idea. Thank you.
So just, since you brought it out, just a little bit of background. So we, we have worked internally, and basically those internal processes have brought us to, this is probably a good idea. And really, it's to figure out what, you know, what can we do better for the employees? What can we do to make them happier, want to stay? What are they all looking for individually? It's not like a, oh, who's doing what type of survey. This is more of a, what can we do for you? What, and we're, we're coming up to negotiations in January. What would you like to see type of thing? What is working here? What is not working? And everybody's opinion and get that consensus. We've done that internally, and we've, uh, we've had another outside consultant kind of do that too, and that was like a year and a half ago. Two years ago? Maybe, maybe two years ago, two and a half, well, before both your times, I guess. Right before, right before their time. We, we did the same, similar thing, and it, it, it brought out a lot of good things, and we made a lot of changes out of it, and it, it seemed to help, so. That's kind of why we're looking at going down this road again, after trying internally already and, and working through issues, so. Any other public comment? Any other comment from council?
Um, just speaking to Tim's comments and Tom's comments. I can only speak for myself, not the other council members here, but I do have concerns. I'm hoping that the survey will help me do my job better with. There are things that I think could be problematic that could directly be my fault that I think I can improve on. And I would really like the opportunity to, in the most professional manner possible, receive helpful feedback on things that I might not necessarily be able to discuss publicly. I don't actually know. Kind of on, on the spot under pressure and usually I'm quick-witted and able to speak to things, but you know, given the staff nature of what we're discussing, I'd have to probably talk to Connor more before I can air any, any of that level of issue. But frankly, I do think that there is some benefit here that can be gained and I really do like your suggestion though, Tom, of handing out some bonuses because I couldn't agree more that that would definitely be a pretty big morale boost for people.
Any other comment?
I would just add that I trust that Caroline and Sean made sure that we're going to ask the right types of questions. And I, I know that especially people that face the public and that are out in the public, they really need to be happy. And they need to have an opportunity to express what they're not happy with or what they are happy with to someone that they trust that's outside our organization. And the, the company I worked for so many years, IBM did that every single year. They, any, any of the people in field engineering or marketing that were facing the customers, they did a very extensive survey and they really cared. But not only that, you just get a much better buy-in when everybody that works here knows what the city's goals are and, and has a chance to express their thoughts. So I'm certainly in favor of this.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, go ahead.
I wasn't going to say anything, but we missed the ice cream special anyhow. So.
I tried.
You know, I used to, in college, assist in, with the psychology professor giving exams. And we always tricked the people. If we were giving an employee survey, we would call it something different because we tend to get a more honest answer. So the only thing I would change is phrase it a little differently so they don't really know what you're after. You get more of an honest answer.
I think we kind of just gave it away.
Uh-oh.
Public baiting and all. Thank you, Kim. Anything else from anybody?
A bit of approval of the item.
Can I get a second? Kim's second. All right. All in favor?
I.
Thank you. That was our last council business item. So we'll move on to good of the order. It's getting late, so hopefully nobody's got too much. Good.
I'll keep it short. Carolyn and I were speaking today about trying to keep events going. And one idea we came up with was a game night. Once a month at the community center, Sierra Vista Community Center. It could be right after bingo where the tables are set up or one flea market when the tables are set up. And it's a way to get people together because the more you get people together, talking to each other, the greater likelihood you'll come to an agreement and say, hey, let's do this together. Let's, so this is just the beginning and we're going to see if we can maybe get some kind of game night going. Thank you.
Thanks. Larry?
Couple of things, just to repeat again, what I said last time is that at some point in time, I'd like to see, have us discuss on the agenda, the idea that came from Jim Bowers and discuss it. And, and the other is that I really think that I see the downtown starting to blossom. We're, we're seeing little signs of it. And there's a lot of people working really hard to make that happen. And, and I think we can see it. You know, there's more activity, there's more people. That's accepting Sunday. Sunday, this town is just totally dead.
All right. Thanks, Larry. Trinity?
Okay. I'm going to give you guys the very brief here. I've got two items I'm asking the council to put on the next agenda. They're both policy initiatives that I've sent over to Connor and our city manager. The first one is USPS and FCC recognition of physical addresses in Colfax for E911 and public safety compliance. So I did put together a memo. They can send it to the council members. So I'll go ahead and move on. The other item is a potential transient consumer and traffic impact fee. I sent that over as well. You may not have had a chance to review it, Connor. Actually, I think that is the one you responded to perhaps, but point being is I have a concept for a potential revenue generation. We can use to offset road mitigation as well as storm green, cleanup, litter, et cetera, without having to go to the ballot for a tax measure. So I'm asking that those be circulated to council so we can potentially consider discussing them on the next agenda. The other item I have that I'd like to have agendized, I know the next agenda sounds pretty full already, but maybe we can do it on the subsequent one. Is I would like to bring up an item to discuss the fruit exchange parking lot and railroad street, at least for the portion closest to the fruit exchange so that we can consider, you know, the possibilities of some improvements there. We've talked several times about how we've got kids that are out there on dirt bikes. Safety first and foremost is my concern. We're never going to stop them from doing it, but let's make sure no one gets hurt severely if we can. Maybe we can talk through solutions once we get that on the agenda.
Sure can. There are some plans for that on, for all of River Avenue that we're working on. So yeah, I guess we could talk about that on the agenda. All right. Isn't that it? Caroline?
All right. It's your social calendar update. You have zucchini races happening tomorrow night again at the farmer's market at six o'clock. On Saturday at the visitor's center, Roger Staub, who is our brilliant local historian, is doing his presentation of 160 years of railroads in Colfax. It is at four o'clock on Saturday. It is super fascinating seeing how our community has changed once the track, the tracks came in and how everything moved in the hills they dug out and everything. So definitely show up over there. It'll be a great one. You have signups both for the chili cook-off and trunk or treat. Chili cook-off is the last Sunday of the month. Trunk or treat is of course on Halloween. And I know that Caroline had a great idea. There's now a power wheels section for kids. So if kids want to decorate their power wheels and bring those to park and be one a part of the trunk or treat, they can. And it officially launched last week that the city is sponsoring the Halloween decorating contest for homes and businesses within city limits. So make sure that you either send an email or pop into the office or call them to get your address registered. So your council members can go around and check out your Halloween decorations, your business. Obviously we need to go into the businesses to see your decorations and homes will cruise by. And then there will be awards at the meeting in November.
Thank you, Caroline. I got nothing. City manager, you got anything? All right. Thank you. Any public comment on our good of the order items? No. All right. There's a public comment there. And we do have two closed session items tonight. The first closed session item is a discussed, discussion on existing litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956 dot nine, section D1, and a request to modify settlement with Snapdragon provisions. And our second item is a conference with our real property negotiator pursuant to government code, section 49 54956 dot eight. And it's a discussion about Dave Guard and his properties. Do we have any public comment on these two items? Saying none. We're going to take, we're going to go ahead and adjourn to closed session. We'll take a five minute recess for as long as the council consensus, all in favor? All right. All right.